Okay. What's wrong?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Any other, I guess I'm opening up to you next week when I do.
So right now, we really don't have any more recommendations?
Well, Dean is still...
There's a transition, isn't there?
I think he said he'd stay on until...
We can always select a different attorney, but I signed the form because basically Ruderware wants to get on municipal law. The Ruderware sent me a letter saying, "What would you like to do?" I said, "Well, we'll take the records and put them with Dean because that's who we're using currently." And I said to Dean, I said, "I don't know what the board's long-term plan is." And he said, "It's no issue if you decide to use a different firm at a later date. It just will be with somebody that is doing municipal law." Because if you called up Ruderware right now, they offer no legal services in municipal law. They just don't pay it in that market.
Okay, Matt?
I value to a very high degree the expertise that Dean brings as well as his demeanor and attitude for challenging legal issues. And I'm very comfortable maintaining our relationship with him as the attorney for the court.
Okay. Yeah.
Sure.
I'll say that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt and a second by Mark to retain Dean as our legal counsel. Discussion.
If we get into a lawsuit, would he be able to handle the complexity involved?
Well, yes, right now, he partnered with Shane Vanderwal, which is another person from another firm that did municipal law. And then he's got two associate attorneys. So I would believe, I mean, I don't know what case he'd have. And if he had a big liability, one insurance company would come to you, would be providing the legal things. But I would assume he could handle what you guys want to do. He has for the last thirty years or thirty-plus.
You don't have to sign a contract or anything, really?
No.
So it's...
I personally think we could possibly go for this one. Now would be the time.
Correct. If there was a time, if you, I think at least should explore the options of what's available to you just by asking other districts to their current cost. I want to know if we're missing something even by asking others what additional services or knowledge could you bring to us and share with us. I think it's worth asking questions. And now would be the time for yourself.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we currently have a motion on the floor with no further discussion. I'm going to see the motion. I'm going to ask all those that approve.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm not going to get a real clear picture on that. Can you please see the roll bubble, please? Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kiwis?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
No.
Thiel?
We're staying with him.
Tomcheck?
Yes.
Zebra?
No.
Sixius, two, no, one extension. Okay, motion will carry. Item AD, discussion impossible decision, cell phone policy. This was something that Kevin and actually Jess had brought back and wanted to revisit. So I'm going to ask Kevin if you'd like to start.
Sure. Actually, this came to the board, I believe, a year ago. Is that correct? And at that time, it was determined not to change any direction and/or policy. In my myself, I was reluctant to take the position based off of the mixed signals that I had. And after watching and listening and learning more, not only in our district but elsewhere, quite honestly, I felt it was something that we needed to bring back to the table at least and discuss further on what we currently have for a policy and our actions going forward. So I have a small presentation I put together. If everybody's kind of following the Daily Herald, the Daily Herald actually had something in this last Sunday's publication. And I'll pass it around. I made a couple of small bullets here, basically what takeaways I took from that article. School districts across Wisconsin are banning cell phones in the classroom in order to reduce distractions during class time. And the big piece of this is that there's one high school that stood out. They implemented a ban, quite honestly, of classroom engagement with any cellphone. And they had experience to prepare a year. And that's Portage High School, very similar district to ourselves. And they had a new standardized policy that's been effective because teachers and administrators are consistent and disciplined. And their policy was is that there's no cell phones in the classroom. They defined the structure other than that. So the issues, I read through the documentation that they provided, Portage published. They published two articles, one on 2017 and the other in 2018. And the links are related in the publication in my summary here. They are also one-to-one with the Chromebooks, and they found that that technology was adequate most of the time. They had four incidences through 2017, 2018 where they applied to have used the cellphone for an application for the curriculum that was being administered. Example was German four, having interpretation of different terms and definitions. They thought that was a value to use the technology and understand how it can be used for that. So the element there is distractions, constant distractions and lack of focus that seem to be present within having them with them. And if you go further with the studies that are referenced by the articles that were published, there's a direct link between the distractions and how well the students are engaged or not engaged. Accountability for achievement and need every minute of period to focus our learning. Again, that turns into academic achievement. And as you'll see in the next coming slides, our academic achievements in our report cards identify we do have opportunities. We have not attained a positive trend with academic achievement. Something we need to stay focused on, and it's in our mission statement and also referenced in our meeting minutes from August 28th, 2018. Our new needs, needs to engage with one-on-one, face-to-face, not through a device. That interpersonal skills that are needed, quite honestly, for employers as well as others in communities. There needed to be a balance. Actually, I took a little more initiative. The gal that implemented all this, I called her. I talked to her. It's a principal down at the high school down there. I wanted to get a few before, okay, how did this work? How did it not work? And the consensus was it was eighty-five percent of the teachers were in favor of making some type of standard policy structure for cellphone use. And eighty-five percent was not a unanimous decision, but when it was made, they decided that they had to have a hundred percent engagement. Everybody had to do the same thing. So as I went through down the list, I found very similar elements as to not only it was provided in comments from our survey from everybody, but also discussions that I personally were involved in with other faculty and staff members themselves. So if you can move on here with this. Implementing, what they really focused on, implementing a focus for fifty minutes initiative. They changed the 2017, 2018 handbook. This is when they implemented it. They took the approach in sixteen, seventeen. They cultivated this system, working with administration and the faculty. So it wasn't a situation where they just hooked a switch. They took a year and they worked it out. Then they decided to pursue this way. Needed educate the public, the why and the value. They spent a little bit of time communicating with parents, reach scores that improved. They explained that inconsistency with the practices, with addressed, uniform policy for what being an ongoing concerns. Again, consistency. And again, that's the supporting link that was published. So what did they learn after one year in 2018? There was another publication. Staff praise the changes, took away distractions from the kids, have experienced the changes. Some of the students that took the higher level going out, seniors, they did see the value, quite honestly, because they were going into the university system or in the workforce and recognition of they wouldn't be able to use their cell phones all the time in those environments as well. So Facebook Mondays, interesting part, when I talked to the gal, she said, "You know, the bullying issues and issues from Facebook over the weekend, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, those occurrences went down to almost nothing." I thought that was kind of interesting. So I needed to relay that. That was a takeaway. So less work for the administrators. Some of the pushback was it's going to be more work. She gave me the data. Two-hundred-and-eleven incidences last year, one-hundred-and-forty-eight first time. It was a hundred-and-forty-eight, forty-eight second time, and like twelve third time and less than three, four times. So they felt that the policy is being followed and administrators didn't have to engage it. It's just being administered that way. Interpersonal skills improve, more focuses on learning, consistency matters. And that's the link there. The one thing I really wanted to connect to was did they physically see changes? Or do they have data that had changes with their results? The answer is they don't have their scorecard back yet. They do not have that. But I want to remind everybody here that we have an unfavorable trend with our academic achievement at this point in time. And you shouldn't take offense to this. The reality is we need to take some steps, some actions on changing it. And what I'm hearing, there's a link. There's a link between concentration and engagement in the classroom and getting results. So I really felt it was important that we bring this to the table and talk about how we address it. Next slide, please. So my understanding is we have a structure in middle school, page number eleven. Do's and don'ts where you can and cannot have it. It's actually a pretty good matrix. And actually, the progression of consequences, I feel is pretty good structure.
What were the consequences?
Back up there. Confiscation of the device by classroom teacher assistant. Students pick up their device after school for each teacher offense. Confiscation again. I think he goes up another level, number three. So each semester, it's a clean sheet, is the way I understand it, semester track. So then the structure also for the, in the high school. My understanding is that it's up to the individual classroom teacher and how it's administered and facilitated. So all data for the Portage High School cellphone policy, this is the data I just referring to, to supplement potentially what I've brought to the table. So I wanted to bring it to the table, and it sounds like we have Mr. Crowsey here. Initially, I was very interested in what his takeaway was. If we had a situation where we had more safety concerns and issues there, I wanted to know. It would influence my decision and approach with this issue here. So I would like to engage you in that discussion. What do you experience? What are the issues? How can we make things better for everyone? Do you want my personal or professional?
Well, yeah, your personal opinion actually brings us in our package.
Well, what do you want to hear about?
How much of your time is spent chasing issues such as the social media type?
So social media, I would say probably consumes about seventy-five percent of my time. But you got to keep in mind that seventy-five percent is not created necessarily in the school. It's created on the outside of the school, which what happens on the weekend or what happens at night always comes brought back into the school. Do I see a distraction? So this is my personal and professional as well. Is there a distraction? So when I start my job, I had this kind of policy with the city of Moleskine that says, "I cannot be on my cellphone unless it's work-related." Just by sitting here in this, I pulled my personal phone out multiple times because some of the conversation just intrigued me. It was not something for me, so I was distracted by my own phone. So when I went through high school and I had a cellphone, that wasn't a thing. I managed perfectly fine to make it all the way through. The biggest problem that we end up seeing is there's good and there's bad to our cellphone policy, but it has to be followed strong. So like with the no cellphone policy at the high school, we follow pretty much the exact same policy as what the middle school does. Where it's taken away the first time, second time, it's taken away, parents have to come in the third time, it's taken away for a period of time. The problem that I run into with cell phones, unless it's a criminal-related thing, I don't deal with the cellphone issue like taking someone's cellphone away. Because I don't really have the legal right to walk up to a kid and say, "This is my cellphone. I'm going to take it now for the rest of the day." Because I can get twisted into that where my boss says, "I prefer you not to touch other people's cell phones unless you have a legal justification to do it." I occupy a lot of my time with social media stuff. Just this year alone, and this is uncommon, especially this early in the beginning of the school year. But in the first two days of school, the first sixteen hours, four hours of it were dealt with. Parents and kids with social media stuff being created within our building. That's uncommon. Does it happen? Yes. But it doesn't happen as much as you would think it does. I can't control what happens out in the real world. I have no say over that, but everyone brings that back into our building.
Is that just in the high school or high school and middle school?
Both. It's give or take. So this year was at the high school because of things that happened outside of the high school and outside of the school. But it got brought back into, to the school. And the thing is, it's easy for kids and parents to come and find me. "Hey, he's at the school all day. We're going to come and find him." So now sadly, I'm being taken away from social media issues because of the fact that I'm easy to be found. And parents say, "I want to talk with you in here," which takes time away from me. And I know for sure the elementary school can vouch for me. I haven't been there once this year. I've never stepped foot in the building yet this year because I'm so busy dealing with other things. But keep in mind, that's not all created in our building. So taking the cellphone away does good because of the fact that you're not distracted. There's no distraction there, but you're going to create more work for Mr. Grimminger, Mr. Reinschmidt, where they're going to get pulled and they can't do their job correctly anymore because they're going to deal with cellphone issues. Because if you guys decide as a board to say, "No cell phones," we have a huge uphill battle for a few weeks. And if we can't grab hold of it in that first few weeks, we might battle this all year. And at the end of the year, you guys say, "This just didn't work out." And that wasted a ton of my time and a ton of administration's time. And at the same time, I don't deal with the cellphone issue. It would give me a break for a while, there's no doubt. But if, I'll use Mr. Grimminger, "Mr. Grimminger, we have an issue with this at the high school." You get that one kid who constantly breaks that cellphone policy rule. I'm going to keep doing it. I don't care what you have to tell me. "Mr. Grimminger says, can I have your cellphone? I'm not coming with you." Well, then we need to contact Officer Crowsey because he's going to have to remove you from class because now you can't be in this particular area of the school anymore. I pull that person out, and that person gives me a few choice words in class and from other students and teachers. And now I have to deal with a bit of disciplinary conduct because this person's cussing and swearing in the hallways. And we have a policy against that, saying, "You have to watch what you say around here. Freedom of speech, but within reason. You can't be cussing and swearing at everyone." So now you pulled me the longest, and now I have to do a report, which is going to take me anywhere from thirty minutes to an hour to enter everything. And so that's an issue if you would completely take it away. One of my biggest fears of completely taken away is most of the teachers who have, I'm not going to say the student's name, but I mean, there's one particular student that I truly think of. He has extreme anxiety disorder, and he's kind of on my watchful. He sometimes worries me because of his past mental health. He doesn't have any friends. He eats by himself every day. I try to stop in the lunchroom and sit next to him so he's not by himself. His only way out of that reality is his cell phone. So you take that away from him for that lunch period or that study hall, that gives him thirty, forty minutes to think of what he could do to everyone else in the school. Because that's his reality check to say, "I'm going to check out of this place. I'm going to check into my YouTube place right now." So you got to keep that in mind, too. And even your students who work hard, who come there and they bust their butts every day, they run into the problem where, say it's a straight A student or say it's a B.C. student, but they're busting their butts every day to try to do well. We're going to take your cellphone away during study hall. You can't watch videos anymore. "I'm a straight A student. What else do you want from me?" Nope. You lost that privilege. It's the few, and this is just like in the real world, Barnes avouched for me. There's a few criminals that ruin it for everybody. And this is the same thing. You have a few students who will ruin it for everybody because they can't follow that rule. If we stick strong with our policy that we currently have at the middle school and the high school, we can battle it. I don't, I have not been called this year to go and deal with the cellphone problem. I've been called to deal with social media issues. The school doesn't deal with that. That's directly with me. And I don't keep a report to give to the school. I have to keep certain things private to an extent because of what it is.
Can I ask a question? Is this kind of relating towards the climate and culture survey that says that we're consistent?
I mean, we're listening.
Right. Because with that question alone, we are allowing our teachers the freedom to do what they want in the classroom. So obviously, that question is going to be, yes, we are not consistent because everyone gets to do what they want in the classroom. So what we did at our team leader data retrieval, okay, how do we become more consistent? So if we have this question again, it's going to get better. So we talked to, within the team leaders, that no phones are going to be used in the classroom at all except for academic purposes. That's it. And then we talked to the staff about that, and we told them, "This is the expectation. Everybody's got to buy into this expectation." Talked to all the students the first day of school. I talked with the freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors separately. I went in the study hall, said the same exact thing. Currently, we have, we've had eleven instances with kids that have had, used their cellphone or had their phone out during the classroom to date. Last year on this date, we had twenty-nine. So it's showing that we are improving a little bit. And Amy, could you open up that PowerPoint or Grady? I just want to point just a few things on here. I told the kids, "Hey, we want to treat you like young adults. We really do." And if you're not going to be a young adult, if you're going to keep using your phone out in the classroom, we're going to take it away, and we'll probably change our policies. But we want to treat you like a young adult, just like when you get in the real world. We want you to be college and career-ready and use your phone at the appropriate time. On slide six, I just want to say, Kevin, this was an awesome presentation. I do have data showing we are getting better. We're not perfect. When you look at our student achievement, I turned it off. If you can, just our ACT scores. When you see, this is our ACT.
And we're getting off track here. We're on a cell phone.
No, it's not off track.
I'm just going over just the slides. That's just slide six. Slide seven, we do have a policy in place, and we did share it with our students, like I stated already on slide seven. Slide eight is just consistently, we're following the handbook. If you go to slide nine, Amy, so this is the new data, right? This is showing what this, what's this?
This is last year's Portage data.
Portage data, and they're saying this is awesome, right? So I think it's about perception. So if you look at, I'm just going to share with you our incidences last year. People are saying our cell phones are really bad. Last year, we had a hundred-and-forty-six incidences to their two-hundred-and-eleven. We had eighty-five one occurrences to their hundred-and-forty-eight. We had twenty-one two-time occurrences to their forty-eight. We had five out of their twelve three-time occurrences, and we had one that had three or four more. So I'm saying, I understand the perception. Some people are like, "Man, we're not doing a very good job with cell phones." And when you look at, I think that's perception, too. We are doing a pretty good job if we're comparing to a school that just thinks that they're doing a really good job with their cell phones.
I'll piggyback on that to middle school. Our numbers are way lower than those numbers that Portage is showing. After getting rid of their cell phones, they're still having those, that many issues. Currently, we don't have that many issues with our current policies. And if you look at our discipline data over the last three years, three to four years of the middle school, it's a continuous arc down. And I guess from my standpoint, I'm just curious like why we're coming to trying to change the policy in general? If you hear from Mr. Grimminger, Mr. Laman, and myself, and Mr. Reinschmidt, that our policy currently is working really well. So I guess if you trust us that we're doing a good job with it, there's really no reason to make a change.
Let me address that a little bit for a second because I'll share with you my perspective. Okay, we've addressed this numerous times. Administration has came and told us, "All the teachers love this. This works great. Don't take the cell phones out of the classroom. They're really important." They have an excellent academic value. Okay, so that's a component. Your staffs and teachers have reached out to me personally when I see them, and they're like, "Get the cell phones out of the classroom." So now I'm getting two different versions. I'm getting, "Our staff is on board with this from you guys." And this is how it works. I'm getting teachers reaching out to us saying, "Please do us a favor and get these cell phones out of the classroom." And then, to be honest with you, I have my own kids, which are like truthful most of the time. And they tell us, "Hey, there are classes I can use my phone in." And my kids are in the high school, so this isn't a middle school issue. But there are classes, teachers that allow me to use the phone, and I can sit and watch YouTube videos in class, and they don't care. And then I go to the next classroom, and if that phone leaves my back, back and it hits my hand, it's getting taken away. And I will tell you as a parent, my struggle with that is I don't want my kid watching YouTube videos during class that have absolutely nothing to do with the class. And so when I evaluate the value of having phones in the classroom, I just, for the life of me, can't see a positive to having phones in the classroom, me personally.
Right.
And it's, the fact that it keeps coming up.
The links on there have that exact element and promote that exactly. If the distraction is taking away from the focus, and quite honestly, are we going to do the easy thing? Or do we want to do the right thing? And I'll be honest, I've gone from easy to we need to step up and say, "We need to make some change."
I think we also have to look at our academic.
And that's your opinion. Thank you.
And can I talk or?
I don't know. Can we?
We were told, we were told that we were not going to be able to talk. Basically, all I wanted to say, Kevin, is that we've seen an academic value with our really good kids that we've instituted twenty-twenty now in our study halls, where they have to do twenty minutes of academics in order to get twenty minutes when they're on privileges. And the kids that want privileges work their butts off sometimes to get to that next level so that they can use twenty minutes of study hall for that time. So I guess there are academic positives to being allowed to use their devices.
Do you use this as a reward?
Absolutely, for sure.
So just to piggyback, our middle school, we had twenty-seven cellphone violations last year, twenty-seven. We had five two-time repeaters, and we took seven cell phones away from students full-time. Some of that is because some of the bullying happened in school with their cellphone. You are done. Picture in a bathroom or locker room, done. And if they don't give it to an adult, they lose their cellphone for the semester. We don't go to step one. We don't go to step two. We don't go to step three. The PRIVES has been a great thing for our kids for motivation. And we changed it. Before it was, they could come to study hall, they had forty-two minutes. If they were on PRIVES, they've earned it. They are great students. They are doing their job. And then we talked at our team lead meeting and at our PBIS meeting about making it twenty minutes of academics. So that way, they got the twenty minutes of reading and that they have no homework to do. But it also focuses them to plan what they need to do for twenty minutes. But again, it's, it is, it's a huge drive for a lot of our kids. Now, your great kids are always going to do their job. They're going to do it because they're motivated, and that's just the way that it is. What this did is this took that middle chunk to motivate them a little bit more to say, "If I do my job, both in the classroom and behaviorally," because that's thrown in there, too, then we get a little kicker. And then we have a PBIS reward at the end of each quarter where we celebrate successes. We celebrate grades, and we celebrate behavior. And I mean, the numbers that went from our first year to where we are now, it's just a great conversation that we have. And our teachers do a great job of enforcing this. And like our eighth grade, they have a no cellphone policy. They aren't there. They're not in the rooms. They're, it's just, it is what it is. And sixth grade, seventh grade, you know, our teachers do a great job of enforcing. I think that's why we only have twenty-seven referrals for that. And again, five two-time offenders. You know, so I do see some academic. And I'm not saying academic like in the classroom itself, like in the science classroom. I taught science. Would I have used cell phones? Definitely. I would have used them for videos because our video programs aren't really that good where they can use their cell phones and they can create some nice things. I would have a use for them as I taught, okay? But the use of motivation for our students and the time of lack of motivation is huge. I think questionably supportive of having that cellphone in some unstructured areas. And talking to some of our assistants that are outside, I talked to Cheryl Barsh, and I wish she would have came today because I tried to encourage her. Cheryl's been an assistant for a long time. When I told her we were going to take them away, she's like, "Oh, my gosh." Because this gives a lot of our kids something to do outside, okay? Because some kids play and some kids don't. And I want to get some benches because some kids want to read at recess time. Would I rather have them playing? Definitely. But some kids don't want to do that. So why force them to do something? Give them something that they want to do. It's their downtime. They need to be re-energized to bounce back into it. So I do see some educational motivation out of it for our students. And that's why I am in favor of doing that to support our students.
Josh and Nate, some of these, were there any updates this year to the cellphone policy in the current handbook?
There was not an update, but we talked with staff, but we need to be consistent. Because after looking at that data, saying that there's inconsistencies, you're telling, "We have to be consistent." And we told the staff and the students, both.
So these are the same as, everything that's in here were in the same handbooks as last year?
Correct.
Yes.
And just the last, you guys know me, I love listening to people's ideas and thoughts, and I go back and forth. The one thing that got me to really say, "Keep it the way it is," is the Wawa Tosa School District. They changed their policy to no cell phones two years ago. And their superintendent, just this year, said, "This is just not working. It is not, we cannot police this. We need to let the kids have cell phones in the school." So they went back to... So they went back to the, a policy similar to ours. And that was really the convincer of why I feel really strongly to keep it the way that, that it is. And really, in the end, I'm asking you guys to trust the process right now, trust our staff, trust the data we'll give you at the end of the year. Are we getting better than last year? Last year's better than what they had and they said it was excellent. So please trust us, trust our students, trust our teachers. Because I'm out talking to the teachers, I'm like, tell me, how you doing? They're like, it's a lot better this year than last year. So please trust us and we can always jump back and look at this again and say, okay, this was a disaster year, this is not working, look at your data. And I'm, I'm good with that. I'm willing to always talk about things, you know that and so is Josh and Katie and, and the rest of us.
I just ask, how do these reports, like I talked to some subs and they say, a lot of stuff that doesn't get put into, put into the system.
Yeah. So we told the staff, you have to do this. This is what you are doing.
You catch, yeah, phone and it's reported.
And we really talked about, this is, you're, we're all a team here, we all have to buy into the system. And it's your responsibility to follow our policy.
So I have a motion. I have a motion that we continue the climate and culture survey for the next three consecutive years to capture, again, data relative to this.
Our school perception.
School perception survey.
So keep saying, we have a question in there.
Question in there and keep, keep the survey. That's my, my motion.
I believe we did. And that, that question is now, um, the survey, so it would carry over?
I think we can be more clear. I, I don't necessarily think the question we asked in the school perception survey, which I can't off the top of my head, was as crystal clear as, it can be interpreted multiple different ways. I see some nodding and you.
And this was the first year that we asked the question about the cell phones.
Correct, but you know, really what I wanted to know was, hey, staff, cell phones in the classroom or not? And that really puts it to bed, right? Instead of people reaching out to me when I, like Crystal, you know, uh, eating fish and different teachers are in there and they come up to me. Um, Crystal never shares with me, just so we're clear.
I do share things with him, just not about school, he's not telling you the truth.
So, but the fact of the matter is, Josh, you're like, don't you trust us with this? And, and I do, except that's very difficult when some of your teachers come up to me and they're like, this is, this is a problem we all disagree with. So how do we get to the bottom of it? We ask Crystal, Crystal, Crystal. Crystal clear questions in our survey, we get the answers. And I think that's something we can definitely do in the next year.
And I think that's what Nate and I were trying to say though, is informally, we've gone around and talked to a lot of our staff. And I, I will agree, there are many, there, I wouldn't say many, there are teachers on my staff that do not want cell phones in the building. But I would say right now, the majority are good with the policy the way they have it because they have the ability right now to say, no cell phones in my classroom if they want it.